Welcome everyone to the City Council meeting for Monday, July 25. If we could have a roll call please to establish court.
Terry McLennan?
Here.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
I'm Thomas?
Here.
David Mitchell?
I am here.
All right. We stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a motion to approve the agenda. Any corrections, additions? Bob?
I'd like to add a discussion of the process to amend a previously approved motion.
Oh, I'll second at that point.
Run that by me again. Process to approve?
Process to amend a previously approved motion.
I guess we'll wait to find out.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mickey?
I would like to do a short discussion on the clarification of emails sent by the mayor to the council in regards to the upcoming vote tonight on our position from Joyce, which means it would need to go as the first thing under new business.
And you don't want to do it as part of the vote for the ward?
I think it should be separate.
I'll second that.
You got a copy of that too, didn't you?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, you did. All right.
I'll second that for him.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other changes?
Postpone the unfinished business one Hickory Street?
Okay. We will defer this because we haven't completed the ordinance yet under unfinished business number one. And if there's nothing else, all in favor of the...
Is Bob's under new or old business?
Beg your pardon?
Is Bob's change addition under new or old business?
Under new.
Okay. Thank you.
Be number five then.
All those in favor saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? All in favor saying aye. Any opposed? So moved. All right, we got planning. We've got a Pat Luhon has reapplied for position three under planning commission.
I'd move to accept the nomination of Pat Luhon to position three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. And the next one is a vote on Dr. John House for, let's see, position four on the hospital commission.
Make a motion to accept Dr. John House for position four for the hospital commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved.
How cool, a doctor on the hospital commission.
We do still have a vacancy on the planning commission and on the cemetery commissions for people out in TV land and city limits. You're interested in serving, please come by and get an application. All right, we're ready for public comments. If we can get a list on public comments, please.
You can go get it. Oh, you can get it? Okay.
It's hard when Kim's not here.
Yes.
She's on vacation.
She's in Canada.
Kim is in Canada.
Oh, I thought you said Ferguson. I was going to say that.
It says hard when Kim's not here.
It's just one? All right.
Okay.
You're the only one.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Kristi Kendrick. Thank you for considering my application to fill the remainder of the term for the Ward Three, Position Two alderperson. I reside in Ward Three and operate two businesses in the city: legal tourist housing and a law practice at the top of Plainer Hill. I have been practicing law since 1977 and Eureka Springs since 2010. I have managed over 50 people and a budget of well over $1 million. I was chief deputy city attorney in the city of New Orleans concentrating on housing and neighborhood development. To address New Orleans' problems of abandoned and blighted housing, I conceived, wrote, lobbied, and obtained passage of 15 Louisiana statutes and numerous city ordinances. I learned how to change laws to change people's lives for the better. I also worked directly with constituents to solve their problems with abandoned houses in their neighborhoods, often permitting them to purchase and rehabilitate those properties and earning the city over $2 million. I learned how important land use in neighborhoods is to the neighbors in those neighborhoods. I was a vocal supporter of '22-'23, and I believe in diversity and tolerance. I am committed to working hard for Ward Three. I have already collected sufficient verified signatures to be on the ballot in November and will run whether you appoint me to fill the remainder of this term. I have a broad understanding of land use issues, can interpret and manage a large budget, and most importantly, understand the obligations that an alderperson has to their constituents. In short, I feel that I can do a good job on the City Council, and I ask for your votes to appoint me to the vacant alderperson position. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. There being no other public comments, public comments are closed. Our first order of business under the new deal is a clarification of email to the council. Mickey, I don't have a copy of that email in front of me, so what is your...
I don't have one in front of me either. I just have my notes. But all of council got it. My problem is you and I had had a private conversation, which apparently is what started this whole email thing, and there were several items that was coming up for tonight that I said we really needed to look into and get things verified, them and other, talking to our attorney, our talking to municipal league. The copy of the email you sent out to us now, even though it came to the council and a few other city personnel, has now hit town, which is why I'm bringing it up here. Everybody now knows what's in that, and in that email, you pretty much turned my words around and twisted them, and in one instance, flat out said the opposite. And the whole town thinks that I said and did all this, and it ain't true, and I'm mad. Do you remember how much I raged about no one has the constitutional right to see my private vote because I am constitutionally protected? Do you remember that conversation? And yes, municipal league could sit there and point out that there has been a court case and that the judge decided that when councilmen make a vote at the table, they have to do like a signed ballot because then the people get to see, make sure how we're functioning. Well, this judge doesn't know duty. We are constitutionally protected for every one of our votes. No one has the right to know how we vote, and if the judge's orders are followed, that means when we all go and vote in November, we have to take all of our ballots, sign them, not put them in the ballot box. They will go into a special holding place where they will then be counted and tallied and named and shown to the public how we voted in order for them to see that we are doing our job right, because more than likely, there's going to be a tax vote on there. This judge doesn't know anything. And until a city like Eureka, who has challenged this state so many times over so many things, until we sit there and say, "Pup years, you are not seeing my vote. This judge's orders are not going to be overturned." It's going to take someone like Eureka daring them. He has no right to let anyone see how I have voted, whether it's here at the table or at the ballot box in November or at any other time. The only way this can happen legally is if at the beginning, the very first meeting of every new term of the council, the council votes that they will be doing if the incident comes up or we have to do a ballot on seating someone, we have to agree either a major majority vote or a unanimous vote, we have to agree that we will have our names on the ballots and they will be up for seeing. Otherwise, this can't happen. We have to voluntarily give up our protected rights. Now, you sat there and told David Schoen that I, now you did use the word she, but since I'm the only female on council, that's obviously me, that I wanted to do this, that, and the other, and I had told you how I was going to vote. I never told you how I was going to vote. I did not say, "I am not voting for the above," and yet that's what you said to David Schoen. It's right there on there.
Is that the email?
Well, I don't want to stop right in the middle of all this, but it says right there, "She said," okay? Well, I'm not going, you'll have to look for it for me, because I'm not stopping right now. I never told you my vote because I protect my vote. That's what was in the email that came to me. She said she isn't going to vote for the above, and therefore, we must have a none-of-the-above box. It is not what I said. I said if someone, if someone does not want to vote for either candidate, it would make it easier all the way around to have a box that says none of the above. And this is in regards to the public who would be wanting to see the vote count sheet, not the private ballots, the vote count sheet. Because if we have five people voting and the count shows three, they're going to go, "What happened to the other two?" They didn't vote for either candidate. That's why if you do a none-of-the-above, it's very clear what happened. This is after 22 years of election work, understanding how the public doesn't necessarily get it unless they've been involved. It just makes it easier. It's not a law, you don't have to, it's just easier. But the way it was worded, and the one thing that I said you have got to really check and find out, is it a majority vote, a simple majority, or is it a 51%? Now, you didn't really put it to them quite that straight, and you insinuated that my thoughts on how it was going to end up was going to be wrong and you were going to be right. Turns out it's the other way. You were wrong. He sat there and said, "If two votes are for none of the above, two are for candidate A and one is for candidate B," your opinion was candidate A with the two wins. And no, nobody wins because you have to have at least three out of five councilmen to get the majority vote. So if people don't want to vote for the candidates and nobody gets at least three, we start over. That's how it works. It was the way things were said. This had been a private conversation of concerns that I had. You twisted around and made it look bad. And like I said, half the town is now thinking that I was doing all that. And that's not right, because that is not what I said or did. So for clarification, since we already said we would have ballots with names and a box, we will have a tally sheet unless we have decided ahead of time before this vote happens that we will sign and show we will not and cannot legally be showing our private vote.
I was going to ask our legal advisor at the table. I was going to get to the heart of all of that and basically say, "So are we going to have a ballot or not, and can we vote for nobody or not? Would you please set the rules for what we're getting ready to do?"
I think clearly, if you want to have a ballot, you can have a ballot. You're not required to have a ballot. But I think the municipal league is correct that you're going to have to elect three people voting for the, in the affirmative, for one person if you want to elect a person.
Do we have to, so if we don't have a ballot, if we had a ballot, would we have really had to sign them?
Sure.
If that's the way we wanted to go.
Based on what the municipal league is saying, it appears that you would. I was not presented with this question earlier, and I would like to have read that case that they cite, but based on that case, the notation that is in what I received email-wise, it would appear that you would have to, that is, appears to be a Supreme Court case, so it would be a reasoning of at least five judges.
So what are we, are we, so are we doing tonight, are we doing a ballot, are we going to do a voice vote, or are we getting ready to decide that?
I think you have to decide that.
Well, I thought we decided two meetings ago that we were going to do a paper ballot with no names.
Point of order.
Our names.
Point of order. That was never the discussion. The discussion was a paper ballot. Signing my name to the ballot is no big deal. Our votes...
That's you.
Excuse me, I have the floor. Our votes are public record, period.
The results of our vote.
Excuse me, I have...
The results are...
Mickey, please.
So I move that we cast ballots, we sign our ballots, and proceed.
I disagree.
You don't have to vote.
Do we have ballots here?
My vote is private.
We do have ballots here.
So we're still on topic one, okay.
Mr. McLennan?
Everybody's going to know how you vote anyway.
Nobody aren't. Nobody knows because at this point, I don't even know.
There's only five of us.
Yeah.
There's only, and what is done...
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's...
There's no names. Everybody will individually know. That's it.
Of elimination, so...
Only individually. You'll know how you voted, I'll know how I voted. Nobody else is going to know how you voted.
Shall we proceed, please?
Mickey, all right, we do have the ballots as from the last motion. We, Anne developed the ballots. I think she has the ballots with two people and have a box for none of the above, if you want. So I think the only question is, and again, you know, we can listen to the attorneys or not, sign the ballot is what they're saying. You know, we don't have to show them, we don't have to tell people what it is, but if somebody asks, then it has to be available.
Didn't Schoen say that that would be posted or something too, which isn't a problem because it's the same thing Terry said, everybody's going to know. We might as well have done a voice vote and got it over with.
A tally of five people does not specify individual votes, and that's my contention.
Should be made for public inspection.
The results are for public.
Okay. So, thank you.
The one thing you also forgot to ask David when you were emailing him was when I asked you about the limitations that I was concerned in regards to when the new law went into effect after the lawsuit. You as the mayor cannot do anything in regards to the exact vote. That was what they had decided. But remember, I told you I was concerned and you were going to ask?
What is your, I know, and I asked David, and you said I shouldn't have been involved with anything to do with the vote.
Yeah, because I didn't want you guys getting in trouble.
So far, I haven't. And David said the only thing, it's probably wise that I help count to verify the count.
Right.
So I am involved.
Right, but I asked Kim the week before I talked to you, and then I asked you again, "How stringent is this new law?" Because I haven't had a chance to read it, and I did not want you guys getting into trouble. You know, like collecting the candidate sheets.
I'm not sure what, I don't know what you are saying you don't want me to do.
I didn't say I didn't want you to do. I said I didn't know if you were permitted anymore, like taking in the candidate sheets or typing it up, any of that stuff. How stringent was that new law?
And did all that, so it's irrelevant.
You got the candidate sheets.
And did everything.
Okay, I thought you got them.
I didn't, I don't, I didn't see, I didn't see any of the candidate sheets.
Okay. That's what I was hearing. But I don't know how stringent that law is.
It's irrelevant, because I didn't see any of it.
It's not, well, we need to know.
Okay, so I guess I'm waiting, you had a motion?
I have a motion that we distribute the ballots and vote on the replacement for Joyce Keller for position Ward Three.
So we've opened...
So do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now do we have a discussion on that issue?
No, let's just vote, please.
Mickey, what's...
Are we talking just the ballot that's done? Can I see them, please?
You can see in a minute. I can see through that.
That's the purpose. That's exactly the purpose.
So you're...
Then we got vision, are you Superman? Oh, yeah. You were living, buddy.
Certain pencils, so you know, nobody can...
Everybody gets, okay, three of the ballots have the first candidate's name, three of the ballots have the second candidate's name, so nobody gets...
In any particular order?
One person's name is first on three ballots. The second person's name is first on three ballots.
Oh, okay.
So there's a psychological behind it.
I thought I was going to have to ask for which ballot I wanted.
I have no idea. I don't want to know.
And what about none of the above?
Just raise our hands.
Neither of the above is on there, and we didn't actually vote on that last motion.
On what? All in favor?
Could I ask a question first?
That's what we were asking. I just wanted to see what is the ballot.
A simple question. If one person doesn't sign their ballot, does that throw any of the...
We aren't, we aren't supposed to be signing them.
We wouldn't know who it would be.
But I mean, does an unsigned ballot throw the election into questionable?
I wouldn't ever know who it was.
Based on what Mr. Schoen is saying, if an unsigned ballot comes in, it's probably a no vote.
Well, then if we want to sit there and challenge this decision that takes away our constitutional rights to privacy on a vote, then we shouldn't sign, and if they want to come after us, it's up to them.
Mickey, that's not the question.
Yes, it is. They have taken away, or tried to take away our rights. We need to stand up to them and say, "I'm voting, but you do not have the right to my name on this vote."
I just want to vote tonight. I'm not going to...
My question is, if there is an unsigned ballot, does it throw the results into questionable territory?
I think if there was one unsigned ballot that comes in, but one candidate receives three other aldermen's vote, that one candidate would be elected. If there are two and two, and the unsigned ballot would be the third of either, then yes, it would certainly throw jeopardy on the election.
No, it would send in no candidate.
No, it would throw, based on that Supreme Court case, based on the idea of a closed and an open meeting, and I would take it further if I, than what Mr. Schoen here said, if you have an executive session, you cannot vote in an executive session to take an action. You always come out of that action and you take a vote in the public of what went on in that executive session. And I would equate this very much with a similar situation here, because you always take your vote basically where any other person in the electorate can see what's going on.
Except that this is an election vote, which is a whole different animal.
This is not, this is a function...
It is an election vote. No one has the right to know how we voted.
Call the question.
All right. All in favor of calling the question, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, so now then, all in favor of the ballots being passed and saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
We haven't actually brought this up as an agenda item.
It's not new.
You know, we kind of just rolled into this deal from...
It's new business number one.
Well, that's not all. We went, we're discussing the...
I move that we open the vote for Ward Three, position for City Council to vote.
Second.
You had a motion on the floor.
Did we?
No, never mind.
All right. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now, give me that ballot.
Now then, can we pass, I guess, pass the ballots?
You kids choose.
Wait a minute, there's not anything on there.
That's until you turn it over.
Oh.
Okay, no way.
So confused.
Mickey just won.
I'll take this one. To make it three and three, there had to be...
Oh, I see, to me, I was thinking one name here and one name there. God, looks like council.
Are you going to actually collect the missing? Preserve the one you just wanted.
I should do what to it?
Preserve that one if we didn't record to show that there were three in each name.
Got it? Hey. Excellent.
All right.
Okay.
It's a raffle?
It is a raffle.
Why don't you give it to the city attorney so I won't be involved at all?
Neither the above.
Unsigned.
Kristi Kendrick, signed. Kristi Kendrick, signed.
Kristi Kendrick it is. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kristi.
Open the door, see if she's out there.
She is.
I bet she is.
And we don't do the other ones?
Kristi?
I've never seen it split up like that.
Congratulations.
My condolences. You won.
But no, we can't seat you tonight.
No, we'll come in tomorrow and... Where is she?
Can I just say thank you?
Yes, ma'am. And come in tomorrow, give me a call, and we'll get you sworn in and make you official.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
You know, Kristi, what the saying is, is misery loves company.
I'm sorry?
Misery loves company. Thanks.
Bye. What's your new code book?
Oh, sweet.
That's for her.
Oh, that's for her. Did we find out what happened to Joyce's? Is it still?
It's MIA.
Okay, yeah, that's all right. All right. Item number two, under new business, the budget cleanup resolution. We are still in the, trying to, we're almost finished with that, and we'll be ready to have that together everybody by the next council meeting. We've got a couple of items that we needed to pull together for that, so we'll defer that until the next council meeting, this cleanup on there. Item three, get a motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a couple of ordinances here. I'm not sure which one, where should we go first? Mr. Weaver, you want to explain what we've got?
What we have here is two ordinances. One that has to be passed before the election, if there is to be an election, and that is the longer of the two. It actually starts the process, but it doesn't become effective until after the people have voted. So you need to take it up at some point, and you will approve it if you want to have the electorate presented with a question. And it will then set until such time as the electorate has voted, and at that point, then, once the election results are certified, it is then, if they vote in favor of the tax, it will then direct the... tax, it will then direct the finance people to begin the process of setting up the collection, which will take five to six more months probably after that. So it's not a hurried-up process. The other ballot is actually, or the other ordinance is to actually direct the people at the county level to set up a special election. Sales tax has to be by special election, but apparently we can have that jointly with the general election. So I have put in that one, and you, if you wish, you can change it to a different date, but I put in it for right now for it to coincide, I believe, with the general election date, the second Tuesday of November. And it needs to be passed after the other one. Both of these documents are based on some examples I got from various places and ran by the municipal league. Both of these have been sent down to the municipal league to take a look at, and I've not got a response yet from them, that they've looked at them. So I would suggest you may not wish to pass them fully tonight, but you may wanna give them, if you wish, one or two readings. You don't even have to do that, I don't think. My calculation, and I don't stand to say that this is perfect, but my calculation says that we would need to, in order to get it on the November ballot, it would have to be passed sometime by mid to late August by this council in order to get it on the ballot.
Mr. McLown?
Just, my question is, on the two-page, the one we have to pass first, this reading here on that section one, is it, is it, is it all, covers everything? Is it's not just, it's not just retail?
Everything.
It's everything? As reading, it says, uh...
Oh, we had a discussion while you were gone.
Oh, you did?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
And there was, he gave the reason why.
Okay, all right, that's...
I'm sorry.
If it's good, it's good, that's all I, that was my only inquiry.
Uh, James?
Sunset clause.
It does not bear one at this time. That would be another reason, if you wish it to have one, you need to probably...
Which one, which one does it go into?
It would go into the, most likely would go into both, but it needs to go into the longer of the two, certainly.
The first one, that we would do first.
The one that you'd do first, fully.
But you're saying we could add it later, is what you're asking us to do?
I'm, I'm suggesting that you not fully pass either one tonight, that you only give it a couple of readings if you wanna go that far with it, but not to pass it fully.
Didn't, didn't Ann, or didn't Ann or somebody say something about, the election people said we had a deadline, it was coming quicker than we thought?
In August.
Was there something about that? Sorry, Ann.
They requested that we have it to them in the middle of August.
That's what I thought.
Okay. So we only have one more meeting after this to finish this through, we don't have the 30-day waiting period, we have to do it three times?
Yeah, we can do it.
Okay.
Emergency clause.
I'm just, we gotta do it then.
But I think one of the things that James mentioned, and that's important, is put the ten-year sunset clause in here.
Yeah, like, real important.
So we could do two tonight and then just hold, is what, no, sir? Or none tonight?
Mickey?
In view of the response that we're getting from local businessmen and their high tax rate already since we ended the retail one a few years ago, is there any reason why we can't put this strictly on retail and leave lodging and food out of it?
There was a reason.
Which is what? I'm asking, I don't know.
Well, we've talked about this earlier, is, is because by doing that, it becomes a local...
Oh, that's what that part was, okay, I'm sorry.
Right.
So there's just absolutely no way. Damn. Okay.
Mr. McLown?
So what we can do, this is what I have in my mind, would be do the first reading of this one, the two-page unit, and then, and then prior to approving the second reading, attach an amendment regarding the sunset clause.
First.
And then likewise with this one.
First readings tonight, okay.
No, I'm, I'll do it all. That's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna suggest, is that we read it all three times, do the emergency clause on both of them, and get on with it.
Well, the sunset clause isn't there, and the attorney wanted us to wait to add, add it.
So we should do two tonight?
So we needed to stop at two.
We could do two, two of them tonight and do the third.
How difficult is that to word, the sunset clause? I mean, that's...
Sunset clause isn't necessarily that difficult to word, the reason I was requesting that you not fully pass it tonight is it was sent to the municipal league, and I did ask them to have one of their people look over it before we pass it, because taxes are one thing that get cities in trouble, that costs lots of money if you do them wrong.
Now, one of the things, and, Mr. Weaver just talked about doing cities wrong, and I was talking with our clerk, we've had this issue before about, and for the public, about where the money was spent. At one time, we had to have this redone and go before the public, before to have a change. And I wanted the public to know at this point, and of course, when we read it, this is strictly for a small portion, 25% going to the auditorium, and then the rest for water and sewer. It's not for any other parts of the city, and it states in that, in this ordinance for that.
And it goes along with the ten-year plan, and, yeah, ten-year plan, it has a sunset and has 25% for the auditorium, those were the highlighted points.
Correct. Yeah, Mr. McLown?
Are you comfortable with the two-week delay?
I am for the final reading.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I will still be okay.
Okay. So we're gonna do two, go for it.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we give this ordinance, the two-pager, a number and, and read it for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's so moved. Any opposed?
Ordinance number will be 2244. An ordinance providing for the levy of a 1% sales and use tax within the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, declaring that an emergency exists and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the city, has determined that there is a great need for immediate improvement of municipal services and for a source of revenue to finance such services in regard to the city auditorium and the city water and sewer infrastructure in the city. And whereas Title 26, Chapter 75, Subchapter 2 and Subchapter 3 of the Arkansas Code of 1987 annotated, the authorizing legislation, provide for the levy of a 1% citywide sales and use tax. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1. Under the authority of the authorizing legislation, there is hereby levied a 1% tax on the grocery receipts from the sale at retail within the city of all items which are subject to the Arkansas Gross Receipts Act of 1941 as amended, Arkansas Code annotated 2652101 at SEC. And the imposition of an excise or use tax on the storage, use, distribution, or other consumption within the city of tangible personal property, subject to the Arkansas Compensating Tax Act of 1949 as amended, Arkansas Code annotated 2653101 at SEC, at a rate of 1% on the sale price of the property, or in the case of leases or rentals, of the lease or rental price, collectively the sales and use tax. Section 2, that all ordinances and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 3, that this ordinance and the tax to be collected shall not take effect until an election is held on the question of levying the sales and use tax, at which a majority of the electors voting on the question shall have approved the levy of the sales and use tax and as otherwise prescribed by Arkansas law. Prescribed? 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 Thank you. Section 4, that the revenue raised from the tax shall be used to fund the city auditorium's maintenance, repair, and operation in an amount equal to one-fourth of the revenue, and to fund the city's water and sewer infrastructure's maintenance, repairs, and operation in an amount equal to three-fourths of the revenue. Section 5, it is hereby ascertained and declared that there is a great need to establish...
That's the emergency clause.
Got it.
It is?
Should be.
It is. On the next page.
Same, same.
Yeah, actually, on the second page, that word comes in.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, why? That's it?
Yes, sir.
Section 5 is out?
Uh, no, it's on hold.
Is the emergency clause?
Oh!
It just doesn't say emergency clause.
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, that phrase is on the next page.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. McLown?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2244 on its first reading.
Say again.
By title only? Oh, no, you're right, never mind. Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's so moved. Mr. McLown?
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2244 up for its second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. McLown?
Yes?
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas? Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Title 0, ordinance number 2244, an ordinance providing for the levy of a 1% sales and use tax within the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, declaring that an emergency exists and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Mr. McLown?
I would like to propose, and make a motion that we add a sunset clause to this ordinance for a 10-year period from the date that it takes effect.
Second?
Point of order.
Oh, wait.
We have to pass this.
No, we need to approve the reading first, yeah.
Make a motion to...
Move to approve, approve...
Second.
Aren't we under discussion?
No, no, we're, we're, we, we have...
We approved the reading to read it.
For the second, she read it, didn't she read it already?
I read the ordinance title.
By title only, no.
Okay, now it's discussion. We're gonna make the amendment and then pass it on the second reading, and then stop there. Right?
Do, do we need to make a motion for a sunset clause, because we still can do it on the third? No?
Well, it doesn't matter.
That way, this way, you'll have it, and it'll be in there when we, when we do the third reading, we'll have it in print, that's why...
Are we missing a motion to approve it? Are we, we're wanting to put the amendment in there before we approve the second?
No idea what we're doing.
And then, and then, that way, it'll be prepared.
All right, so, everybody understand what the motion is?
I may not be very logical.
Put sunset clause.
You drank too much French wine.
Jollown, jollown.
All right. James?
I was just thinking, I defer to having the city attorney draft it, and we could pass it on the third reading, as opposed to just, you know, off the top of our head, sticking it in there somewhere, I just balk at that right now.
Yeah, I, I think what I'm understanding is rather have it written out, and then it'll be in, in ordinance form.
Well, nobody, nobody's second on my, uh...
Not yet.
My deal, anyway.
How do you feel about it, Mr. Attorney?
Well, eventually it needs to be written, so if you make it clear that you want one written, I'll have one in your third reading for you to...
So we should pass this?
And then if he wants to pass it as an amendment at that time, it'd be clearer.
So we should pass this now, is that what you're saying?
No, if, if you're basically just telling me you want, and I've heard that at the table enough, I'm gonna draft one unless...
So you could have, you could have the sunset, and you could have any potential changes from the municipal league as well.
Okay. All right, since there wasn't a second, how about a motion to approve, um, on second reading?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2244 on its second reading.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right. We roll call?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And that's where we stop with that one.
Who else wanna do this one?
No, go for it, Dave.
No, no, Mr. Weaver, don't say that.
It wouldn't hurt to do.
It'll be the same wording.
Okay, yeah. You got a motion to, to discuss, or a motion to...
I think that really enjoys this stuff.
No, we're just...
Mr. McLown?
Let's move on. I'd like to make a motion that we assign an ordinance to, number to this, to the other ordinance that we have in front of us, and, and put it up for its first reading for approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number will be 2245, and ordinance calling for a special election to refer the issue of levying a 1% sales and use tax within the city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to the voters of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for their acceptance or rejection, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of need for additional funds to operate the city auditorium and city water and sewer operations, and now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section 1, the county board of election commissioners is hereby notified, as required by Arkansas Code annotated, that this ordinance has been passed, directing that special election be held as soon as practical, but no later than 120 days from... Blank.
The purpose of the blank will be to put in the date this ordinance is passed.
To submit to the voters of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the issue of approving or rejecting an additional 1% sales and use tax on all retail sales as allowed by Arkansas Code annotated Title 26, Chapter 75. Section 2, that said election should be held on November 8, 2016. Section 3, that the ballot titled to be used is as followed. First, for ratification and approval of an additional 1% sales and use tax to be collected on all retail sales within the city limits of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Second, against ratification and approval of an additional 1% sales and use tax to be collected on all retail sales within the city limits of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 4, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. McLown?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2245 on its first reading.
Say again.
Discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, or, I wanna ask you again, do we have it covered? Because there, again, I mean, down there, it says it's retail sales, and I'm afraid some of the people in town are gonna, uh, say that it's, you know, that it's just based on retail, and it's not. I mean, it's, it's, it's all-encompassing, except for groceries and that type of thing.
Mr. City Attorney?
That's one of the reasons I want the municipal league to look at the wording, but I think it does what you're asking to collect, but I stand to be corrected if they think not.
In other words, we have put that question...
will go with, but they may change their mind when we hear from them.
Okay. It's a good reason for waiting till, for the two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, sing five, saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, I said aye, I've just choked up.
And Ms. McClung?
I'd like to suspend, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules and, uh, uh, place, uh, ordinance number 2245 up for its second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was that you, James?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to make a note about the ten-year sunset?
That sunset clause will go on here also.
Okay, but I mean, do we need to make a verbal note of that?
No, no. Mr. Weaver's, we patted it into his head.
You stir up, you're in trouble.
As thick as it is.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Title zero, ordinance 2245, an ordinance calling for a special election to refer the issue of levying a 1% sales and use tax within the city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to the voters of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for their acceptance or rejection, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Ms. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2245 on its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was that you, James?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to make a note about the ten-year sunset?
That sunset clause will go on here also.
Okay, but I mean, do we need to make a verbal note of that?
No, no. Mr. Weaver's, we patted it into his head.
You stir up, you're in trouble.
As thick as it is.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Title zero, ordinance 2245, an ordinance calling for a special election to refer the issue of levying a 1% sales and use tax within the city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to the voters of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for their acceptance or rejection, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Ms. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2245 on its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, sing five, saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so moved. We'll bring this up, uh, then to our next meeting. Okay. Um, agenda setting.
No, we've got his thing.
Oh, Bob, Bob had something. Uh, process to amend previous motions.
Motion to discuss.
Sorry.
Yeah, how can you out there? You can second it, Bob.
This revolves around B and Bs, but it's, my concern is not with B and Bs at all, but just to, because you guys weren't here for the last meeting, on June 27th, there was a motion made to have a six-month moratorium on CUPs for B and B residential zones citywide, and, and that passed with a vote of, of four. Then last week, when the two of you were not here, during the meeting, and it wasn't on the agenda, Mr. DeVito spoke up to clarify his position on the moratorium on B and Bs. He said it is for new B and Bs, not transferring of present B and Bs. At that point, the mayor said, do we need any action on that? Mr. Weaver said, no further action was needed, and the mayor said, just repeated, so that does not affect any existing B and Bs. And you spoke up and said, so it doesn't cover transfers or sales of B and Bs. So, I, I'm not sure what happened. Did, the original motion was to have a moratorium on all B and Bs in the city in residential zones.
I was, I was...
Ms. McClung?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'll wait until you're finished.
Oh, well, I mean, I've got, I've got the minutes here, and that's, that's in the, that's what it is.
So, what's your question?
Pardon?
So, what's the...
So, my question is, the vote was for a six-month moratorium on CUPs for B and Bs.
Literally.
So, we need, we need to decide, we're talking strictly new?
Uh, Mickey, wait, wait a minute, Mickey. Ms. McClung?
Uh, I think probably ought to go back and look at the tape, because I think that may be just an omitance on the, on the, in the minutes, maybe?
Anne?
Because I distinctly remember James speaking to just that.
I was extremely careful and listened to it over and over and over, and three times it says on the tape, moratorium on B and Bs. So, I contacted James to ask him, do you wanna do anything about this? And then at the next meeting, he chose to clarify his intention, but I was extremely careful to make sure I hadn't dropped that for this purpose, because I was getting phone calls from people who were like...
James?
On edge with their sales.
It's, it's a matter of interpretation, as is the case with most laws. Now, if somebody wants to interpret it one way, fine, if somebody wants to interpret it another way, fine, but it's a moratorium on, on CUPs and B and Bs, uh, in residential districts, and, uh, the implication on my part was, uh, no new B and Bs. I mean, that's a moratorium, is no new B and Bs. So, transferring an existing B and B is not adding more B and Bs to the inventory. It kept, it keeps that level of B and Bs at the same. That's an interpretation on my part. If somebody wants to interpret a different way, then, you know, then, you know, that's...
Okay, Mickey?
Would it make it easier for the whole city if we just did a one-line clarification? This is on new B and Bs only?
That's been done.
Well, isn't that what you're asking, if that's what we need to do?
Well, my clarification is, how do we correctly amend a previously approved motion?
And the aim being to do that?
My position is, we don't need to.
My position is, it's easier for the citizenry, the easier we make it for them.
Mickey, Mickey, hold on, please, ma'am.
I'd like to ask the, the legal person to help, should, do we need to, I know we clarified it just verbally in regular discussion, do we need to, do we need to take any action to, to distinguish that tonight? And if we do, what would we do, sir?
Well, if you absolutely wanted to, you could take a one quick vote to change it, because it is just a resolution. But based on what Mr. DeVito was saying and based on what I've heard from some of the others, it appears to me that the intent of the parties when they voted, or at least part of the majority, had in mind that it only apply to those applying for new ones. And I, that's the way I read it, or way I interpreted it when you asked me the last time at the table, was that it would have only applied, and if that is the way it is, there's, there's no need to correct it. If you do intend for it to, I would more likely take a vote if you intend for it to not only apply to new ones, but if you really intend for it to apply to all. If you intend for it to apply to transfers, that's where I would make the clarification. Otherwise, I'd leave it as is.
And so, having this discussion here, we have actually documented our intent.
You're, you are documenting a legislative history at this point, I think, that a court would uphold based on what you're saying.
Thank you.
Bob, you look a little confused.
Pardon?
You look a little confused.
Well, I mean, quite frankly, I voted, at the original vote, I voted no for a moratorium on B and Bs. Had it been a moratorium on new B and Bs, I might have voted differently. Uh, that's, that's, so I don't, you know, I just feel like it, and, and quite, I don't want to have another motion come up in the future on, on a different subject. Maybe I'll make a motion and you'll pass it, and then I'll come in two weeks later and add in a couple of other words, you know, and I just don't think that's a good way to go.
So, actually, what you're wanting to do, and your question, and, and City Attorney can address this, how do you amend the motion?
Correct.
That has been passed, and it's relatively easy, but I'll let the City Attorney say how you amend the motion.
At the next council meeting, if you wanted to amend the motion, someone who was a part of the majority, someone in the winning part, would bring it back up and ask to do that.
So, anytime you want to change the wording of a previously approved motion, you have to do it officially?
But the note, well, that's one way.
Well, if, if it is truly a change, and I think the way I interpreted it, and, and I can't speak exactly for Mr. DeVito, but I think the way he interpreted it, and maybe even others at the table, was that it was to only apply to new, uh, ones, rather, in this instance, it, it, and if that was a confusing way of putting it, I'm sorry, I didn't help you to, to understand it better, I'm sorry that the discussion didn't bring that out further, because that's something that we don't wanna have happen, is the interpretation being different with what you voted on. But if the interpretation is, uh, that it is only on new ones by the majority of the table, I think that that's what we have is in place.
Mickey?
This being Eureka, would it not behoove us to merely add that one word, new?
It's been added.
Well, but apparently not legally. If we haven't voted on it or done what you said, or the majority group has to bring it up.
James?
It's, it's pretty evident here, both on the opinion of the City Attorney and casual conversation amongst the council people, that the ordinance is about no more B and Bs in, in the residential zones. The only issue here is if somebody wants to transfer a CUP and the administration challenges that, that's the only time there's a problem with the moratorium. So, unless the administration wants to challenge the transfer of an existing B and B, we're just wasting our time and our breath here and just let it lay.
Anne, you have something?
The reason I really was striving for you to clarify what you meant, realtors, people who have their property for sale, and the general public were asking me, they were taking what you were saying literally. In order to answer their questions clearly, it seemed the most rational thing to do was have you say what you really intended, and that way, the anxiety level would be reduced and people could go forward.
All right, and, and he has, and we have, so...
Right, so it wasn't just, I mean, it, there was a, there was a distinct purpose for asking for clarification. It was not frivolous, it was not...
David?
I, I would never have voted for it if it had been all encompassing. If it wasn't specifically for new units, I would never have voted in favor.
Well, I felt like that, so...
And David?
I received a fair number of B and B owners calling, especially those that have their ends up for sale, and I said, I had listened to the whole thing, and I absolutely, in my mind, never felt it applied to B and Bs that were going to be sold and the CUP was transferring. I, I honestly, when I was listening that night, my interpretation was that it was for new CUPs within the residential areas. And I said, but at the next council meeting, I am sure that we can clarify that so that it's on the record and, and it'll put an end to it, so there won't be any concerns out there. And then Anne obviously had already taken that bull by the horns and had, had dealt with it, so that, that's where I was with it.
Okay.
Mr. Weaver? Resolutions, if I may, uh, suggest something to council, resolutions are things that are of temporary nature, as we all know, and they don't necessarily have to be put in a written form, but in the future, if it makes council feel more confident, we might want to pass a procedural rule, that's your guys' job, to decide, that you reduce it to a written form, any resolution. It's not, it wouldn't have been that difficult that night, maybe, and it might have helped strengthen certain people's understanding of what other people at the table had in mind.
Well, for myself, we're focusing too much on B and Bs and not on the process, so I, I like, I like the formalization of the process.
It actually spouts it out, Robert rules of order, too.
Pardon?
It actually spells it out, Robert's Rules of Order, the process, so, all right. Anything else?
So, we're gonna follow Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, that's what we decided in January.
Well, that's, I was shocked at the last meeting that we didn't, we weren't following some process. We just, somebody threw out a couple of new words, and you said, is that okay? And the ma, and the attorney said, yeah, that's fine, and David said, oh, yeah, this is what it means.
It was a casual conversation, I'm not gonna...
I've always Robert every time, man, I missed it.
That's a process, I mean, you know, anyway, so, anything else? Yeah. Um, city council, uh, agenda setting?
I've got a question first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've got all this paperwork on, um, what you call it, Street East Mountain, are we not doing something about this? I mean, all this was in our boxes?
It's not an agenda topic.
It's not an agenda right now.
Is it supposed to go on the agenda?
It will go on next time.
Oh, okay, do you need one of us to do that?
They have, no, I'll go ahead and put it on there, because it's, uh, they just submitted the petition this week.
Okay, I thought I was missing something.
So, yeah, so that's written, it's in your, in your deal.
Okay.
So, uh, any other agenda settings from anybody? James?
Um, the Attorney General has challenged the judge's decision on Fayetteville's anti-discrimination ordinance, and there, uh, she's in the process of, uh, trying to overturn Fayetteville's anti-discrimination ordinance. I'd like the city of Eureka Springs to join in amicus brief with the city of Fayetteville to show our support for their effort, because it's the same thing that we're involved with here. If they lose, we lose, and it's, it's our ordinance at stake just as well as their ordinance at stake, so I feel a, a show of unity with Fayetteville is appropriate, and I'd like to have a issue of an amicus brief, uh, on next week's, or next meeting's agenda.
Second?
What does that mean?
It's just, it's just a symbolic statement. I'll let the City Attorney.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, an amicus brief can be anywhere from a mere statement of support to a full hour drawn out brief where we argue our own points of why the law is valid from our perspective, and that can, or does...
Cost.
That can get very expensive, uh, but it doesn't, if we believe particularly that Fayetteville or one of the other entities that is writing briefs has failed to properly bring out a point that we believe is valid, that is, that is our opportunity to bring that point out and submit that to this... Typically, you see this done by nonprofits a lot of times, in behalf of a particular piece of legislation. It's not typical of other governmental units, but it can be done.
David?
So, we're just wanting right now to put the topic on the next agenda for discussion, so that's basically just all we're doing right now, and you've helped us a lot already, so I, I'm still gonna leave my second there for discussion, so we can have it.
Okay, we'll, we'll put it on, on, um, how to proceed on that. Anybody else have another...
Any idea, James, when they're gonna be hitting Fayetteville? Okay. So, we don't know, I'm just a rush, I'm sorry.
I can't remember exactly what he said, but I, I think we need to put on the agenda the need for written motions or resolutions. You're calling a motion a resolution?
It would be a brief, it would be a, I mean, if, if, you would need to decide how thorough, how far you wanna go with your stance.
You're talking about the same issue that James just brought in?
He's on a different issue.
He's back on that, the issue...
You're, you're talking about amending motions.
Yeah, right.
Oh, uh, we don't need to, I mean, that's just the process, I mean, that, we just didn't, we didn't follow it.
Why didn't it happen last week? Two weeks ago?
Probably because I didn't think about it, and, and Mr. Weaver didn't think about it, we didn't bring, bring it up.
That's all I needed to hear.
It wasn't a big deal.
Two weeks ago?
Probably because I didn't think about it, and, and Mr. Weaver didn't think about it, we didn't bring, bring it up.
That's all I needed to hear.
It wasn't a big deal to us, I mean, normally, if it's something that's got to be changed, if it's a, an ordinance that needs to be amended, if it's an ordinance that needs to be amended, then what you do is, the people who vote in favor, somebody has to bring that up and vote it, and, to be amended.
Right.
We didn't think the ordinance really needed to be amended, or the moratorium, or the resolution, so we just kind of let it go at that. But the normal process is following Robert Rules of Order, and anytime an ordinance needs to be amended, then that's the way you do it, but we weren't amending anything, we were just clarifying. There's a little bit of difference there, I'm not sure about, you know, and James kind of clarified it. If it needs to be clarified before, we can always get it in writing, however the council wants to do it. It's up to the council to make it at that time. If you want it in writing, when those issues come up, just say you want it in writing, you have that authority.
For every motion, okay.
Anytime you want it to, clarification of a previous motion. Not of every motion, just of, you know, because the motion's going to be followed by standards anyway, but it's for clarifications what you're asking for, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Well, you started out making me feel a little bit better by saying, you know, we didn't follow the procedures last time, but then you're, and, you know, but now...
We, if we were amending the ordinance, we didn't follow the procedures, but we didn't amend anything, we just clarified it.
Well, I think going from, and I, I'll go back. The video...
This is an agenda setting, do you have a topic to put on the agenda?
He's trying to get it out.
Okay.
All right, you want to put this back on the agenda for clarification of, of how to amend the motion?
Yes.
Clarification of a motion.
And also...
Okay. Anybody else?
Wait, discussion now?
No, about just a second.
This is an agenda setting.
That's right, that's right. On the agenda.
That's going on the agenda, we'll do that the next time, never mind. All right, anybody else have anything?
You gotta wait.
I don't know where I'm at.
All right, City Council?
I missed this. I, I really missed this.
Yeah, we'll speak...
Don't you wish you were back in France now?
Bob?
Comment, no, I, I'm done commenting tonight.
Mr. McClung?
I have nothing.
We're glad you're back.
Thank you.
Safely.
Mr. DeVito? David?
No comment.
Mickey?
Uh, just a reminder that our next meeting starts at five with a food truck workshop, and for those who care, it is Sharknado Week. Yes. See, I'm wearing my Sharknado T-shirt. Look out for those suckers, they fly. That's it.
Oh.
Have you ever seen a shark flying through the air in New York? It's awesome. Sharknado Four is on Sunday.
Well, uh...
On or off?
All right, I was going to, and try to set up a budget workshop, um, but I forgot we had the food truck workshop going on at the same time, so I'm going to have to redo that, uh, on there. Mickey, I apologize if I misinterpreted, misdone anything, uh, I did not do it intentionally. I was trying to get clarification on what you had asked. I didn't think anything about putting he or she in, in reference to it, uh, you know, and I apologize, and I'm sorry that I misunderstood what you had asked me. I was trying to get the clarification so we could get this election going, but, um, the, um, I think I had something else, but I forgot what it was. We got a bunch of, a few upcoming events coming up this Wednesday. We have Samantha's favorite movie coming up, Monster, um, no, the Faulkness Monster, Monster Boggy Creek.
Oh, Legend of Boggy Creek, oh my god.
Yeah, it's coming up Wednesday, eight o'clock at the auditorium.
Oh, my god.
Boggy, not boggy.
Boggy, boggy. I'm from the Ozarks, I don't know this South Arkansas place.
Soggy Bottom.
Bog, it's a, it's a scary movie, Monster, yeah.
Oh, my god.
So, uh, everybody should come up and show up for that. And then right after that, we have the Organic Festival at the end of the Ozarks, on the 29th through the 31st. And then the fifth and sixth, we have our Indy Human Rights Film Festival, uh, at the auditorium on the fifth and sixth. The sixth, we'll have Diversity Weekend at the Basin Park, and that evening, we'll have drumming in the parks, and then August 5th, 6th, and 7th, everybody's favorite weekend, yards and yards and yards and yards of yard sale.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if there's anything that you need, they'll be in the yard sale, one way or the other. Other than that, I'm sure I forgot something, but thank you, on motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right.